Good evening, everyone. We're reconvening after our closed session item. Can we, at 6:10? Can we please have roll call?
Trustee Hodges.
Present.
Trustee Flores.
Present.
Trustee Young.
Dr. present.
Vice President Amboy.
Present.
President Fox. Trustee Jacobo.
Present.
Trustee Arbaba.
Present.
And trustee De Leon.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Report of actions taken in closed session. From item 3A, the board heard an update on case number FCS-059425 and gave direction to the attorney. For item 3B, the board heard a legal counsel. No decision was given. For item 3C, the board heard an update on the superintendent's goals. With that, do I hear a motion for approval of our agenda? Trustee Hodges.
Make a motion to approve the current agenda.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbaba.
Aye.
Trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we are down to our forum. Community members.
As a reminder, these are cards for non-agendized items, which I believe at this point, we only have one for community members. Hazel Wilson, if you can come forward.
Good evening, Superintendent Aurelio, President Fox, and members of the governing board and student representatives. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the district for again, this year, partnering with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Kappa Beta Omega Chapter in supporting our students and families through our childhood hunger initiative Power Pack Chip Program under our Empowering Our Families Initiative. This program ensures that up to sixty families at Grace Patterson Elementary School receive additional food for the weekends through the school year. Grace Patterson was the first African-American teacher in the Vallejo City Unified School District and a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and a founding member of Kappa Beta Omega Chapter in Vallejo. Kappa Beta Omega Chapter also partners with Solano Weidemann with our YLI Program Youth Leadership Institute and is a student leadership program. We greatly appreciate VCSD and Ms. Heather Tapasio in ensuring that all rules and guidelines are followed throughout the process. Thank you, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future. Thank you.
Any other cards?
That's it for community forum.
Thank you. All right. Consent items. Do I have a motion to approve consent items 7A through G? Vice President Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 7A through 7G.
Dr. Young.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
Trustee, I'm sorry, Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbaba.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Information A.
Good evening, trustees. So in front of you here, you will find three updated board policy packets dating back to June, August, and September. These are our first reading, so over the next couple of weeks before our next board meeting, please take the time and energy to look through these packets, read the updates that are being made. The majority of the updates you will see are legal mandates to board policies. So we ask that you receive this information.
Thank you. We're now down to Agenda Nine, action items A.
We don't have a presentation, so we're going to go to B, B1, which is the first item there, and that's going to be a resolution recognizing the week of the school administrator. I've asked our Assistant Superintendent Chair to read the resolution.
Good evening. Whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and more than six million students it serves. Whereas school administration, school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts. Superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees who are considered administrators. And whereas the most school administrators began their careers as teachers. The average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's students have served in edu-- most California superintendents have served in education for more than twenty years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from school communities, fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organizations, elected officials, and district and county staff resources to promote ongoing student achievement and school success. And whereas, research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. These site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state. And whereas, the state of California has declared the second full week of October as the week of the school administrator in education code 44015.1. And whereas, the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Vallejo City Unified School District, that all school leaders be commended for their contributions that they make to a successful student achievement. Thank you.
Vice President Amboy.
I make a motion to approve--
Resolution 5085.
Resolution 5085.
Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbaba.
Aye.
Trustee De Leon.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item, 9B2, is the adoption of resolution number 5082, recognizing October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week. Do I have a student trustee, Zenaya De Leon? See, I saw that hand just jump up.
Whereas alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse in the United States continues to be a serious problem affecting millions of individuals, families, and communities. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign is the nation's oldest and largest drug use prevention effort designed to mobilize communities, educate youth, and encourage participation in drug prevention activities. Whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign honors the memory of Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent Enrique Camarena, who was killed in the line of duty in 1985 and whose sacrifice inspired millions to take a stand against drugs. And whereas, the 2025 Red Ribbon Week theme is "Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free", symbolizing how each positive choice is an important piece in building a stronger drug-free future. Whereas, the Vallejo City Unified School District recognizes that preventing substance use is integral to promoting safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments for all students. Whereas, the district is committed to educating students about the risk of drug use and supporting them in making healthy decisions. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Vallejo City Unified School District hereby acknowledges October 23rd to the 31st of 2025 as Red Ribbon Week and recognizes that preventing substance abuse is integral to promoting safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments for all students.
Do I hear a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution number 5082.
Do I hear a second? Dr. Young?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Jacobo.
Aye.
Trustee Arbaba.
Aye.
And trustee De Leon.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
I think the biggest thing in the word that you kept saying, thank you so much for reading that, you did a great job, is the prevention and having teaching and prevention in all the schools so that addiction does not happen. So the awareness and keeping that prevention alive so that youth and others can have bright futures that don't get interrupted with other substances. Thank you so much. Our next item. We're now down to-- All right. We will now move to item number 9B. Consideration of a request by Elite Public Schools to adopt resolution number 5086 for certification of the number of unhoused pupils to be housed by Elite Public School under this state school facility program. Enter into rehabilitation agreement and complete state allocation board forms for application for new construction and/or rehabilitation funding for the district-owned facilities located at 100 Whitney Avenue, Vallejo, California 94589, or another district site. Mr. Aurelio, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, President Fox and members of the board. So this next item has been placed on the agenda for the board's consideration of a request from Elite Public Schools, which is an independently operated charter school that's authorized by the Solano County Board of Education, not by the Vallejo Unified School District. So Elite currently operates on district-owned property at 100 Whitney Avenue, the former Weidemann Elementary School site. It is under a long-term facilities use agreement that was executed in June 2021. That agreement provides Elite with exclusive use of the full site through June 30th, 2032, with two optional five-year extensions. At the conclusion of that term, possession of the site automatically reverts to VCUSD, allowing this board to determine whether the site should be repurposed for district programs or potentially sold to support future revenue needs. The request before you this evening is for the board to adopt a resolution, a rehabilitation agreement, and a state enrollment certification form, all of which are required for Elite to apply for state facilities funding under the Charter School Facilities Program, or CSVP. Sorry, CSFP. As part of that process, Elite has indicated that would need to enter into a thirty-year facilities agreement with the district in order to qualify. It's important to note that this is not a district-initiated item, and the administration is not recommending approval of the proposed documents. This item is presented to ensure transparency and allow the board to consider Elite's request in the full context of its implications for the district. The Charter School Facilities Program carries significant long-term obligations. If approved, the district would be required to hold the site and any improvements in trust for the state of California for a minimum of thirty years. This means the district's ability to repurpose, lease, or sell the property in the future would be severely limited, and even if Elite were to cease operations or relocate. Furthermore, based on the district's most recent state eligibility data, VCUSD has no unhoused students in any grade span, meaning there is no underlying need to certify unhoused pupils or participate in this program. As this board is aware, we are in the midst of a comprehensive, multi-year effort to restore fiscal solvency, stabilize enrollment, and right-size our facilities. Each property under district ownership represents an important public asset that must be managed strategically to maximize flexibility, preserve long-term value, and ensure every decision supports the education of VCUSD students. Entering into a thirty-year obligation with no financial or operational benefit to the district would be inconsistent with those fiscal and stewardship goals. For those reasons, the administration is not recommending approval of this request. The documents are presented for your review and discussion, and staff are available to answer any questions. Thank you, and I'll turn it back to you, President Fox.
Thank you, Superintendent Aurelio. Right now, we are cards.
Yes, we wanted to, we have received cards on this specific item. We currently have fourteen cards.
And we have allotted twenty minutes?
Yes.
Fifteen times two is--
Fourteen times two would be twenty-eight, and it's up to the purview of the board. You could go twenty-eight if you wanted to, or you can make them one minute.
Two minutes, fine with the board? We will be going over approximately-- We're going over eight minutes, if we do two minutes. All right. Sounds like we'll do two minutes per card.
Yeah, so I'm going to start calling names off, and that way people can come up. You'll have two minutes for comment on Agenda Item 9B3. Colette, is it Love? Yeah. Followed by Kevin Steele and Greg Murray.
Good evening, school board members and community. CSEA strongly opposes any expansion of charter schools in our community. VCUSD is already experiencing significant budgetary concerns. Allowing a charter school to expand would only set the stage for additional ADA loss, which we are already experiencing. This means that VCUSD would have fewer resources to provide to our students. As a school community, all schools should be inclusive. However, when looking at the resolution for Elite, they are excluding our severe SDC students. This is not what community is about in our city. VCUSD includes all students, no matter the circumstances surrounding them. Just like CSEA's mission statement says, "To improve the lives of their members, students, and community." Additionally, as is shown by the California School Dashboard, Elite has significant performance issues. Let's do right by our students and think of VCUSD first and deny any charter school expansion in this community. Thank you.
Kevin Steele.
Good evening, board, trustees, superintendent. My name is Kevin Steele. I am the president of the Vallejo Education Association, VEA. We are opposed to this resolution by Elite charter schools. Unhoused, as you mentioned, we are closing schools right now. We've got more than enough room for every one of those students back on our campuses. So VEA is opposed.
Greg Murray's next, then Jeremy Geronimo.
Good evening, board members and community. My name is Greg Murray. I've been a teacher here in Vallejo for twenty years. I teach at Hogan Middle School. I teach math and computer coding. I'm asking the board to deny consideration of Elite to adopt the resolution. Three points that I just want to make. Number one, taking facility maintenance funds away from special ed students at Hogan would be detrimental to their environment and the purpose of what, you know, why they're there. That's a major issue because we've inherited a lot of new special ed students at Hogan this year. Number two, superintendent at the beginning of the year mentioned that he closed inter-district transfer in an effort to keep students here in Vallejo, which I think is a great move, right? Vallejo kids need to be in Vallejo schools. Number three, taking money away from public schools and giving it to Elite is a fiduciary irresponsibility. We, as mentioned earlier, we are in a serious budget problem right now. And spending money as opposed to cutting, as we are cutting out schools, talking about layoffs, talking about program cuts. You guys are, you know, faced with some tough choices. So again, please do not approve that request. Thank you very much.
Jeremy Geronimo.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. My name is Jeremy Geronimo, longtime resident. I've been here since I was three years old. Went to Loma Vista, went to Solano, graduated from Vallejo, class of 2000. The last time I was here, I spoke on behalf of my two children. My daughter was going to Loma Vista at the time, and at the time, you guys were planning on cutting the STEAM program. The, you know, basically STEM program from Loma Vista. And I told everybody here that I would take my kids elsewhere if you guys cut that program because that's detrimental to not only my kids, but my kids' friends, every student at that school. And that's what I did. I'm a man of my word. I went to Elite on the recommendation of the teacher that you laid off in the STEAM program. She recommended Elite. My kids now, both of my kids are excelling, one of whom is special needs, and they're excelling. The results of the school speak for itself. It's performing not only at par with VCUSD, but excelling past VCUSD and competing with other schools in Solano County. So the result speaks for itself. So here's what I want to say to everybody here. We know, we've got to be honest with each other. It is a competition, right? We want to make sure we do the best for the students, right? So there's two ways to win a race. You can either be faster than your competition, or you can chop the legs off of your competition. And right now, the funds that you're holding, it'll improve the learning environment for Elite. So right now, you're deciding on whether you're going to chop the legs off of Elite and try to win the race that way because the funds are not going to go back to VCUSD. They're already allotted to Elite Public School. So it's not going to be reallocated towards VCUSD in any way. It's going to go to Elite. Thank you.
Lawrence Hager.
Okay. Good evening, superintendent, President Fox, board members, students. Oh, sorry about that. Good evening, Superintendent Aurelio, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, trustees, student trustees. My name's Lawrence Hager, and I'm an elementary school teacher at Pennycreek Elementary School. We're a community-based school. We're serving hundreds of students and their families. And our school is being closed because of a severe budget deficit in our school district. There is no shortage of facilities here, and in my mind, there is no reason to expand Elite. And I don't like to think of things as a competition. I like to think of us as working together. And I totally understand that students and families, they want an alternative. But I don't think this is the way to go. I mean, Elite has a facility. They're on Vallejo City School District site. That we, and the district, I mean, in our public schools, we educate all students regardless of their skill level, disabilities, language, and background. And we have the space, and there aren't any students that need the charter school to be expanded. So I'm requesting that you turn down their application and that you support the public schools that are here and allow Elite to, I mean, they're already benefiting from our school site and from our schools. I mean, I used to work at Wardlaw also, and it was really unfortunate that got closed and consolidated because of budget considerations, and it didn't seem right to me that it was given over to a charter school. But I think they should--
Thank you. Jasmine Taylor. And then after Jasmine, Ramona Bishop.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jasmine Taylor. I am a TK teacher for Elite Public Schools, but today I'm not here as a teacher. I am here as a parent. My son is a ninth grader at Elite. When he first started at Elite, he wasn't not testing on the grade level for the CAS testing. This year, for eighth grade, the year that passed, he in math where exceed grade level and in ELA, he met grade level. He graduated with a 3.8 GPA. He is the only eighth grader that got to travel with Willie B. Atkins to go to their HBCU college tour this past spring break. It is a family there. These kids are getting what they need, and this, I keep hearing that they're taking funding from the Vallejo School District. This money is not getting taken from Vallejo School District. This is not a part of their budget. This is a part of the California State budget that is going to be offered to us. This has nothing to do with your budget and the money that's coming out of Vallejo Unified School District. We are asking for money to help our schools and to help our students. This does not affect your students that you have. Your budget, if it's a problem with your budget, you need to go to your finance officer and figure out why your budget is not looking right and why you have to continue to close down schools. That's not Elite's fault. So I ask that when you are thinking about this, please make sure that you understand that this is not a budget that is coming from your pockets. It's coming from the state, and everybody has the opportunity to get that money.
Thank you. Dr. Ramona Bishop. Followed by Alicia Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Ramona Bishop, and I'm the visionary and CEO of Elite Public Schools. And often, when people are speaking about our students, I'm trying to figure out who are they talking about? When it comes to teachers telling us how we are underperforming or the lowest-performing charter school, I'm trying to figure out who are they talking about? When the California State Dashboard came out, it is true and correct that African-American students at Elite Public Schools are outperforming not just Vallejo, but every single county school district, as well as all Vallejo-based charters. So who are they talking about? When it comes to English learners, who we welcome every student group, and English learners are outperforming not only Vallejo, but every school district and every Vallejo-based charter and the state average, I'm trying to figure out who are they talking about? When it comes to students with disabilities, who are welcome at our school. And we are trying to enhance the facilities that we have for our students with disabilities. And our students with disabilities are second, not just against Vallejo, but every single Vallejo-based charter and the county. I'm trying to figure out who are you talking about? When it comes to that proposition to money, I pay taxes just like-- When it comes to that Proposition Two money, I pay taxes just like you do. That's my money. It's a state bond. So who are you talking about? Lastly, we pay $375,000 a year for that campus at Wheatamun. So when it comes to us infringing on your budget, I think we're helping it. Who are you talking about?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Williams. Thank you for your time this evening. I am the principal of the illustrious Elite Public Schools, and I'm very proud of the position that I hold. I just wanted to take a moment to say it's not us or them. The students that attend Elite are Vallejo students. They are the kids running up and down the streets of your neighborhoods. They are the kids you see in Walmart. They're the kids you see in Target. They are our kids, and parents have the right to choose. Parents have the right to choose where their students attend school. And we have a ton of parents coming to Elite because of the family environment, and not just the family environment, the high academic rigor that we provide our students. We're saying we want to make Vallejo great. We want to make sure our students are educated. We want to make sure that, you know, we have safe environments so more people are attracted to come and live in Vallejo. Why not allow us to expand so that we can give parents choice? Because when you give a parent a choice, they're likely to come to our area and live here. My family's been here since the 1930s. My great-grandfather moved here in the 1930s. It is actually time to focus on kids in general and not Vallejo kids, VCUSD kids, or as Elite kids, just our kids in the neighborhood. If we're offering something that takes to the next level, certain demographics, like students with disabilities, that was mentioned, or African-American students, or EL students, the data does not lie. You can't refute data. Every year, we're getting better and better, and next year, we're going to be better and better and better and back again until we get what we need for our kids. Thank you.
Kira Lee.
Good evening, and it's actually Kyra. Very nice to meet you all.
Sorry about that.
Raise your hand if you're a student of Elite Public Schools. Raise your hand if you are a student that does not attend Elite Public Schools. Our children are participating in public comment and school board meetings tonight and have spent time to listen to all of you talk about their underperformance in their face. And I'm concerned that we didn't read the room before we started speaking about my kids. Because in times like this, it's very interesting that we came together before a board that can make a decision on behalf of hundreds of children. And Mr. Aurelio, you said that there is no reason to improve their environment. So 680 children attend this school district that is recognized by the state of California. We are not just a school. We are a black-led district. And my five-year-old is present tonight. She is able to do addition in Spanish, which is not her native first tongue. Thank you to Dr. Ramona and her team at Elite Public Schools because they're changing the narrative for a tide that is coming through Vallejo, and that empty building will not get you funding. So when we talk about finances, the ability to upfit a building built in the 60s that you retain will help your balance sheet. The ability to send kids to school that are growing up in the crest around the corner from MacDray's grandmother, whose house still stands, is a testament to the legacy of Vallejo that I want you to honor tonight. And in terms of your obligation in this partnership, you guys are our facility title holder alone. There should be no further discussion about the stakes of scores, only that the site is ready to hold students. Your job is to speak to site capacity.
Thank you. Ava? I want to see your last name, Ava Elite.
Baby? Hey, can you say your name for me? Can you say your name, what's your name? Are you going to be shy today? So, hey, just look at me. This is our meeting, right? And these lovely men and women, they love you, okay? Can you tell them what your name is? Speak right into the mic. Hmm? Can you? We're going to try one more time. Okay, how about this? Point to the people you know. Do you see, do you see your principal here? Do you see the people that care about you here? Yeah? Points one. Who's teaching you Spanish? Say it in the mic. Who?
Mr. Spanish teacher.
Can you count to ten in Spanish for me? Uno. Ready? Dos. Ready? Here you go.
You guys, can you count to ten for us, please?
Can you count to ten for us, please? The reason that we brought our kids this evening is because you all should not be scary to them. And starting at five years old, I want them to get to know you all, and I want them to feel comfortable talking to you all about how they feel in these spaces. And right now, this is unusual because anyone that knows Era Elite knows that she's not shy. So being called underperforming and not worth the funding that is already set aside for our school is probably intimidating, and I would ask you all to reconsider your language in front of my child.
Kay Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. That's my daughter there and my partner. My daughter, her name is Era Elite, and it's just, you know, ironic that she goes to Elite Public Schools here. Something I just want to share is I, I, I'm a new parent, so this is my first child. So I've had the opportunity to date schools in the area and decide where I would want my child to go. And I'm a security professional. I have over 16 years of security management experience, and one thing I did was go on every school campus in Vallejo to see if I would get stopped, and I didn't. Not one school in here stopped me until I got to Elite Public School. I walked in on campus, and I was immediately stopped by people wearing Elite hoodies, like, "Hey, how are you? Good morning." I don't recognize you immediately. I could not sneak into that school. And from that moment on, I said, "This is where my daughter needs to be because this school is going to check for her. This school is going to make sure that when she's there from eight to three to six, she is taken care of, and no one's going to be on that campus that doesn't belong." So while you guys are talking about your budgets and underfunding, you really need to look at your budgets now and look at how you can rearrange it to, one, look at security because your kids aren't safe at these schools. But at Elite, I know my kid is safe and the rest of the kids are, so thank you.
Lori Takamire.
Good evening, Board members and everyone. I've been a teacher in this district for 26 years, and I was under Dr. Bishop for a long time. I see, listening to these people say that their children deserve the best. They do. Their children do deserve the best. They are our VCUSD students. However, they chose to become independent. They chose to leave our district. They chose to do their own thing. Okay, that's their choice. Dr. Bishop said that they pay rent to us. They haven't paid rent in two and a half years. It is public knowledge that they are not paying rent to us. Where's that money? Why aren't they using that money for their facilities? They currently own or lease or do something with two buildings on Maryland. Where is that money going? Why is that money coming out of their district? Why don't they spend that money on their students? Regardless of what you decide, regardless of those points back there, you have a lot of tough decisions. I taught at Wheatamun. It's a huge campus. It is saleable. We need money for our students. VCUSD first. We need our children to be served as well. You are a board for our kids within our district, and I would encourage you to put our children first, like our mantra. VCUSD first. Serve our children. I have nothing against Elite. I have nothing against their children. They are beautiful, wonderful children, but they're choosing to be independent. They made their choice. Please choose our children.
Shannon McLean.
Good evening. To address where your payments have been for the past couple of years, you overcharged us initially, so that's why. You're, you're getting your money back. So that is where the money, the payments are, is the payments are, you, overpaid. Okay. So that being said, I moved to Vallejo in 2019. My children attended Highland Elementary, which is a VUSD school. They were immediately pulled out of the school. You don't do homework. The teachers were not attentive to them, and they basically wrote them off. We went to Caliber and had issues there. They have found a home at Elite with teachers who believe in them, who push them to greatness and not send out documentation that they are very low-performing according to your VEA president. So I would never call Vallejo High, Jesse Bethel, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the third school, low-performing or underperforming. These are all children of Vallejo, and they all deserve the best education that we can offer them. The more we put into them now, they will come back and make Vallejo better later. The fact that my children, for the second year in a row, are sitting in front of Vallejo people and hearing that they are not good enough, they can't go to high school downtown, they can't have their, their building that is old, that needs many upgrades, that is, that's unacceptable. I pay taxes. I own a home in Vallejo, and I expect that they should be able to have the funding that I voted for. Thank you.
Khadijah Brown, this is the last card on this item, and hello, Khadijah.
Good evening, President Fox, esteemed Board members, and Ruben, who I get to finally speak to as a superintendent after he formerly served when I was the president of the Board of Education for Berkeley Unified School District, a role that I still serve in and serve as a senior member. I am a supporter of public schools, but a promoter of who is doing it well. And I'm proud to work at Elite Public School, a school that is doing it well. Our Elite affirmation teaches our scholars that they are focused, exceptional, brilliant, meritorious, diligent, invincible, the pride of their family college bound, and an asset to their community. Last year, I saw this affirmation move from being words that are recited to a reality made real by my eighth-grade math students. You see, my students, just like all of the other students in the state of California, took the CASP assessment, and they did exceptionally well. Thirty-six percent of my eighth-grade math students exceeded the standard. I did not say that they didn't meet it. I did not say that they nearly met it. I did not say that they met it. I said that these students exceeded the standard. This was, thank you. This was a 1,700% increase from what happened previous years. This is unheard of. This is not happening in the state of California, but it is happening in my classroom because our students are living out the dream of the affirmation. The agreement tonight that has already been expressed and already been identified has to be demystified in some way. First and foremost, this is not money from the city of Vallejo. It's not money that's coming from Vallejo Unified School District. It is money that's coming from the state of California, money that all schools are able to access if given the opportunity. I also want to identify the payments. You know what happened there. Elite was overcharged, and so the payments did not happen. But tonight's ask is not to divide, but...
Thank you. President Fox, that concludes comment on this item.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion or comments? trustee Hodges.
If we consider asking for what happens to the current use agreement? Current use agreement is 10 years with an option for an additional five and five more? Is that correct? So...
We currently have a facilities use agreement that's 10 years. There is an option, two additional options for five years, or a max of 20 years in the current agreement. The request is for a 30-year agreement, so it would change, we would have to change the agreement.
So is the, changing the agreement necessary for them to get the funding from the state?
Based on, based on the information provided to me by Dr. Bishop, yes, that is part of the process.
Dr. Young. Microphone, please.
Now is what?
So the current lease is a 10-year lease that would expire in 2032 with a five-year renewal option and a subsequent five years after that, so a max of year 2042.
And if this, um... Resolution, is this what it is?
Yeah, there's three parts to the item. There's a resolution, there is the unhoused pupil, the rehab agreement as far, and also the application to the state board.
So what, how does it affect the lease that we have now? How would it affect? How would it?
The, the request, the request is asking us to, well, there are a couple, couple parts. There's a request to show 30 years, which we do not have a 30-year agreement. In addition, the application is saying the current address of the, the former, the Wheatamun site, but it included language for any or other district property as well.
Dr. Young, are you finished?
And I do want to remind the board that the current agreement was litigated, and there was a settlement. You know, what, so the, the confusion around paying or not paying...
Yeah, no, I understand it.
That, that was part of a settlement agreement.
It's, it's in place now.
There were credits given, and payment will resume next school year.
Okay, got it.
trustee Hodges.
I'm trying to wrap my head around why it's necessary for us to change the agreement to 30 years for them to, to get support and resources from the state.
It's part of the, the process to apply for that Proposition Two money. They, they have to show that they're, that they're going to be around for that amount of time.
What, so...
Excuse me. What you are talking is the board. There's no comment. Thank you. Do you have more to say, Dr. trustee Hodges?
Yeah, just, I'm not, I'm not clear on why the, the district has to change the contract. Just, it, it's, it's not adding up to me. I'm, I'm not, because it, it, from what I, Superintendent, what I hear you saying is that it, it's a financial liability or risk for VCSD.
So the CSFP funding requires a minimum... So the CSFP funding requires a minimum 30-year facility use agreement, which we do not have in place. We have a 10-year agreement.
Okay.
Vice President Amboy.
I mean, what are, are, are legal and financial obligations if the, if we do extend, extend this?
The legal and financial obligations, so the CSFP participation would require our district to enter an M O U and with Elite and the state agency. So if something were to happen to Elite, they relocate, they, their charter is revoked, or they close, we have to put the facility in a trust with the state for 30 years. Which limits what we could do with the facility.
Dr. Young, did you have a question? Young, did you have your light on? All right, I have some questions I'd like to clarify. I don't know if it's Assistant Superintendent Fernandez or yourself. I need some clarification on some numbers, please. Dr. Bishop at the podium said that she pays $375,000 a year, is what I heard. Is that what she pays a year?
No.
Can you please tell me what she does pay a year?
There is no payment at the moment. There is a $275,000 reduction for this year. And there was a $275,000 reduction for the prior two years, starting in 2023. Next year, 26, 27, there'll only be a $38,000 reduction.
Okay, and so you're saying for the number of years since the settlement, there's been no, there's no payment made?
Correct.
Okay, and the payment will not start again till when?
That would be next year.
It'll start next year?
Correct.
So there's been no payment made for the facilities because of agreement? Okay.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify those numbers. Also, there are, there's $160,000 set aside since, for the last two or three years, for a roof repair. Has any of that money been utilized to help students in a facility, to use that money to make the facility more fit for students?
We haven't triggered that part of agreement, the agreement.
So the occupants at Elite have not utilized the $160,000 to repair the roof for over two years that money's been sitting? To improve and make it better for students and for staff?
It's available for the repair.
There is, there is no speaking, I am the one speaking. I am not asking to speak. Would you like to leave? Would you like to leave? Thank you, please leave. There is no lying, would you like to leave? I am asking clarification questions. Right now, this is board discussion, you had your time. No, at the time of the motion, those were the cards that were had, and we do not reply. Is that true? We are not talking to the public, I am talking to the staff. All right, call the order. Thank you for the information. So there's a question if the money has been used for the roof. There's another part, and I will wait, and we will just delay the vote if you continue or are out of order. Your time as well. The other question that's been brought up, and also been brought up by people around Vallejo, because we talked about, people talked about being taxpayers in Vallejo, which, I'm not sure, they're taxpayers in Vallejo. But taxpayers of Vallejo, we have approximately 121,000 residents in Vallejo. And of those 121,000 residents in Vallejo, we said there's about 670 or 600 some students talking here. I've been asked questions, and I heard people bring up, there's two facilities that are being rented, the taxpayers are paying for. There's one at 690 Walnut Avenue on Mare Island. There's another facility being rented at 1091 As You Are Drive here on Mare Island. Those two facilities are being rented on top by Elite, and that money is being spent monthly for facilities. Anyways, I just, curious how much is being spent on those each month for each facility instead of being spent for children? Or is it being spent for children or student success? So that's a question of taxpayer money of Vallejo. No. So at this point, is there any more discussion from the board? No? Sounds like we're ready for a vote?
I had a quick question.
You have some lights.
trustee Hodges.
So I'm trying to understand, the request has three parts to it.
Correct.
Certifying a number of unhoused pupils, a rehabilitation agreement for the district-owned facilities, enrollment certification forms. What exactly does that mean? What, so what do we have to consider to, to grant them their request out of those three?
Sure, so to, to move this item forward, it would be, it would, it would take a motion to approve this item, which includes all three components. So just approving one portion of this would not support it moving forward. It would require all three components of this. It's essentially the application that they need to apply for the funding.
Well, then, there's an issue because we don't have any unhoused students.
We do not.
trustee Flores.
I, I think I had a, um, a question in regards to our costs. I understand that this money is not coming from the district, that that's what I've been, you know, what we've been talking about. It's coming from that, from that bond. But the 30-year gamble that the district would take by passing this, who would have to pay that in, in a scenario where Elite decides to move on, decides to leave the district, decides not renewed, et cetera? Where does that financial responsibility fall? Because I have to watch the financials of this district for, for my, for my community for the next 30 years. So where, who does that fall on?
So, play out a scenario. We grant the, the resolution, they apply for funding, they get the funding. They have plans, they break ground, they start constructing or rehabbing. Let's say at that point, something happens. Charter relocates, charter gets revoked. At that point, we need to find someone else to take that responsibility on. So it's held in trust with the state. But at that point forward, there's going to be multiple decisions that would need to be made, including potentially us coming in and having to take on that debt to complete the construction. Or if we went down a path of, say, surplusing that property and selling it, and there's still payments left, we'd have to pay that first before we saw any of the revenue.
So then the money would come from our students, from our district?
It would.
Okay.
Are there any other district comments or discussion? At this point, since there's no more board discussion, do I hear a motion? I'll ask a second time, is there a motion? I do not hear a motion on this item, so therefore, we are moving on. So we are moving on to our next agenda item. What is our next agenda item? This item has been failed since there's no motion. The board now has a board study session. The board now will adjourn. The board will adjourn now for recess. We are adjourning for recess.